Council meeting to order at 7:01. I'll call upon the city attorney to give a report of discussion from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council heard the conference with labor negotiator and both real property negotiations. Direction was given to negotiators, but there is no reportable action. Council did not hear the performance evaluation. That item was continued until the end of the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, at this time we'll have the pledge of allegiance and then we will have the invocation from council member Alaman. So you'll want to remain standing for both, please.
I'll be sharing a Buddhist prayer with everyone tonight as we start our meeting. So with a boundless heart should one cherish all living beings. Radiating kindness over the entire world. Upwards towards the sky, downwards towards the depth. Omitting none. May you be happy. May you be at ease. May you be free from danger. May you be loved.
Thank you. So we have a presentation this evening for some young ladies that are here in the audience. So council member Alaman will be going up to the podium to recognize our Legends FC girls soccer team.
It is a it's a pleasure tonight to recognize the Legends FC Girls 2014 team. This team currently plays at Silver Lakes and they're a Flight One soccer team for Legends. The girls have been training very hard and they are currently number one in Southern California. In June of this year, the girls played in Florida for a very prestigious tournament, the Premier Supercopa 2023. The tournament takes place with teams from all over the United States. And these girls took first place in the tournament. So yes, give them a round of applause. So a big congratulations to them. Can we have the coaches and the team please come up? So we have our team manager here. So I'm going to present, we're going to hand to each girl. The Norco City Council applauds your achievement as champions of the 2023 Premier Supercopa. And I'm going to turn it over to the team manager if she'd like to say a couple of words.
I would just really like to thank all of you guys for taking the time to honor these young ladies. They are doing such a great job and to have you guys take a little part of your meeting in order to honor them. It's a big pleasure for you guys having us here. Thank you for that. Oh, yes, the what they're carrying is actually their plate that they won. That's instead of a trophy, they got a plate demonstrating from the Supercopa tournament from this June in Florida. It was over 20 teams. They won fourth place.
Are these gold, solid gold? They're very heavy. They might be worth something. So at this time, we're going to have the council stand up and we're going to take some pictures. So families, if you want to come up and take some pictures of your girls, we're so excited to celebrate them.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to agenda item number two. Which is, or I'm sorry, number one, which is our reports from regional boards. So we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Bash.
I I guess a couple of things. I'm getting ready to take over the chair of the RCA Board of Directors. And I got a note that Ann Mayer, who is the essentially the CEO of the RCA, the RCTC, is leaving. So it seems like I'm now three for three every time I become chair or something, the director leaves. So I'm the common denominator, as I was told by our city manager. And I really appreciate that. I'm going to have Robin maybe cover a little bit about our meeting with the CPC, CPUC. We had our first Veterans Commission meeting, which was really eventful. And the best thing that I actually, I think that I attended the most pleasant was the Chamber of Commerce First Responders Luncheon. That was absolutely wonderful. It was really neat to honor the first responders. I'm so proud that we are represented by Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Chad Bianco came, which was really wonderful. I really feel like he takes care of Norco. And I just want to reiterate how proud I am to be represented by CAL FIRE. But that may well have been the best move that we ever did, Berwin and Greg. They are just stellar. So between our deputies and our first responders, I hope they know how much we care for them. That's all I have.
Council member Alaman?
Yes, nothing to report at this time for any other city events or things that are going on. You can check my social media.
Council member Hannah?
Good evening. First with RTA, every Friday, all day, everywhere we go, free rides on all local commuter link and go micro buses through June 28, 2024. Ridership is steadily increasing and they're still hiring coach operators and training. And one more thing that came up after the meeting the other day is there's a new nonprofit called Shuttles for Soldiers. And they actually have their office up here on Beacon Hill. And they're they're in business to help veterans make their medical appointments and whatever else they have to do. It's all concerned about the veterans and and medical. So I'm going to leave this with Lori and Dana and see if there's some way we can get involved and help them because they're just starting starting out and they do need some help and everything. And I think it's a great, great deal. I mean, RTA, I believe always had dial a ride available for some of the veterans from distant parts of the counties to get the loan and lend them. But I think this will be a quicker deal. And it's not, not totally new. It's new here. They're going to be all over the, all over the area, but I think it's pretty much nationwide. So the name of it is Shuttles. The number four soldiers, if you want to look them up. Now, our other RCTC has still got lots of construction in the area, lots of road closures. And you can check rctc.org for closure information because it was too many of them coming up to list on the deal, but they're getting ready to, they're getting close to the opening up the what do we call it down here? I call it the passover when they come off the 91 to the northbound 50. Wow, yeah, when they come over the into the toll lanes, they're getting, they're getting pretty close to having that done. They were supposed to have that done along with the bridge at the same time this last spring, but COVID stopped a lot of construction because they had to rebid some of these jobs three or four times because of cost increase in concrete and wood and steel. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Council member Newton?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Last week, attended the Board of Directors meeting for the Chino Basin Disalter Authority. Business as usual. I did also want to note a couple of outside events. Last Sunday, we had the CAL FIRE Open House at Station 47. And that seemed very well received, steady group of parents and young kids. And I think everybody had a good time at that. And then also we had last Saturday, the annual compare carpets barbecue for CHOC. And once again, that was very successful. Thank all of you for your support on that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So my report, just to kind of tag on what council member Newton said, the fire floors were very well prepared and answered. I usually grill high school kids and they did an excellent job answering all my questions and super well informed and professional. So kudos to your team on that. On October 11th, Assemblymember Asalee was here at City Hall for a meeting with city staff, just going over current issues and topics and events. So it sounds like the Assemblyman's going to have some casework for his team to help us out with some of our ongoing issues with our TRP and a few other projects. So that sounds encouraging. On the 16th, we did have our, our TRP meetings. We were able to meet with staff of commissioners from the CPUC, basically to state our case in person to those folks so that hopefully it helps them understand our petition and kind of where we're coming from and give them a basis for why we are filing the petition and maybe some spots where they can do a little more digging into their research as they get ready for that. And then I also attended the Veterans Commission meeting as well. So Kevin, do you have anything to add with our meetings? Yeah, so they were virtual meetings, 30 minutes each or just a smidge over on those. So we were pretty dialed in. Kevin hit a piece, I hit a piece, council member Hemingway from Riverside hit a piece, and then our attorney kind of closed us out. So I thought they went pretty well, all things considered, so.
I would add that our attorney was stellar. He was just spot on and that obviously he has a lot of expertise and so I was pleased with that. And that's also generated a huge flurry of activity since then. Lori's been, we're getting letters, all kinds of things that are happening that she's having to, I'm not quite sure how she's doing it, but a ton of things have happened. It looks like now we're going to have two letters, maybe three from property owners. And thank you, Councilman Newton, for arranging that. Matt's the one that started it. That's all I have.
All right, moving on to item number two is our consent calendar. Does council have any items that they would like to be pulled?
I do.
Okay.
2D.
And I would have pulled that one as well. Any other items? I'll entertain a motion for consent. Second. So we'll go ahead and take our vote on consent.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number three, which is our items pulled from the consent calendar, which is 2D. The Policy and Procedures for Additional Budget Appropriations, Measure R. So the reason that I would have pulled this is just to concur with my no vote from the original item. Council member Newton, do you have any discussion?
Yes. And I'm only going to speak for myself on this one. When we had this report, at the end of the day, I was still confused on these options. And so in hindsight, I just felt that I just didn't quite get the report the correct way. And so I think to make it as easy as possible, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration to move away from option number one and support option number two on this, which is this option requires additional appropriations to be reviewed and recommended by the committee before city council consideration of the adjustment. I believe in our contracts where we have, you know, the 10% city manager's ability to handle change orders. But I think this is the better option, as far as I'm concerned, in lieu of option one. And that I think very simply, if it passes, we can just change this in the resolution and not have to rehear this item. So I make a motion to reconsider option number two.
Second. So under discussion. So we're all on the fly here. So what, what, hmm, what do I, what's our average kind of cost for items that come for Measure R? Maybe, I know I'm asking questions to help the top of the headless set, but we've kind of changed track here. Thank you.
Could you repeat that? I'm just looking, so, so when I hear what council member Newton is proposing, 10% sounds like a reasonable number, but kind of depending on the cost, right? So if it was a hundred dollar item, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, right? That's only a $10 increase. I wouldn't necessarily think that it should have to get kicked back. So that's kind of where our discussion was a little wonky last time, right? When we talked about percentages versus an amount, because the percentage I think is reasonable when it's quite a large bit, but depending on the cost. So I was, my question is kind of to give some context to that 10%. What might be kind of the average cost? Are all of the projects very large amounts where 10% would be a reasonable threshold?
Right now, our Measure R projects budgets are from about a hundred thousand to four million. So each project varies. But the current budget, that is the range.
Okay, so on a hundred thousand dollar project, if it were to be 10% over, so $10,000, then we would send that back to Measure R according to the motion on the floor?
I'd say no. The a hundred thousand dollar contract, city manager has authority up to $10,000. So it'd be
$11,000.
Right, so when it's, that contract goes over $110,000, then that option two would allow that to go back to Measure R Committee. Conversely, if it was a $4 million project, it'd have a 400,000 dollar cap. And if
Measure R doesn't review the contract. They just review the project total, the funding of it. So they don't, they never review each contract.
They just approve the appropriation amount.
Of the, of the project itself.
Right. But so you're saying that if, if, so could you give us an example? Like, that's what I'm trying to, I want to make sure I understand the scenario.
So like our biggest project, the pole barn. Pole barn probably has about, what, 10 to 12 different contractors. The main one being the construction of the barn. So within each contract, they each have that 10% contingency that city manager could approve. Without the total of all those contractors, they can exceed the appropriation that Measure R has already approved.
Plus 10%, right? Well, that's included in the appropriation, right? So then, what I heard from you, Council member Newton, was that if it included that 10%, that you would want to send it back? Or 10% of the appropriation amount?
When it goes over the 10%.
Right, so if the project was 100,000, then it would be $10,000.
Right, under city, say in that case, city manager's authority.
But I'm saying, no, 100% appropriation, including the 10%, right? Because the number is already includes the 10%.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think Lori has something to add.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. So I hear what council member Newton is suggesting and I think, and I hear what, I said, I think you're taking a little, I think your interpretation's a little too literal. I think they're not talking about literally the contract. I think you're suggesting that, because often, let me back up, often these decisions are happening before there's a contract. You know, we originally estimated a project at 100,000 and now that's two years later and now we think it's 125,000. So for example, in that, in that scenario that I just said, if the originally Measure R approved amount was 100,000 and now Amanda says, now it's going to be 125, that would be 25%. So there's no contract yet, but it would be 25% of that would need to go back to Measure R for consideration. So I think that's true. So I have a suggestion on language that I would suggest if council member Newton's friendly and you suggested we could consider it in the resolution. So in lieu of that sentence before where it says passed and adopted, in lieu of that sentence, the sentence inserted into the resolution would say additional appropriations beyond 10% of the budgeted amount will be reviewed by the committee before city council consideration of the adjustment. So in other words, wherever it is in the process, if it's happened, if the contract's already out, it would be within that contingency amount. But often these are happening before contracts are let. So it would be Measure, you've already adopted a budget that for a project that was $500,000, that was recommended for approval by Measure R. If we needed an additional $50,000, we could come back straight to council and you could do that, that'd be 10%. If we needed another $75,000, then that would go back to the committee. That's what I'm hearing is your intention, Council member Newton. And if so, that's my suggestion.
This is why I think it got confusing for me at the last meeting and gets a little wonky. And I'm going to say no. If the $100,000 included the, the 10% contingency, right? That's the total job. And it comes at 125 or 110, it goes back.
But I, so I think where we're having the disconnect is you're thinking about it in terms of we've already gone out to bid. And often these adjustments are happening before there's ever a bid.
Right.
So what I'm, so what I'm suggesting, and even if we haven't been out to bid yet, because I think the spirit of what you're saying is you want to get more committee input. So before we've gone out to bid, there is no contingency in there, right? They've got, there's just a dollar amount. And presumably it does include contingency when it's a construction project. Sometimes it's not that kind of project, right? So that's my, I still think I'm getting at your intention. But maybe not, so help me understand then, I guess.
Believe me, I'm trying.
I think it might simplify if we just sort of, if, think about it as an additional 10% beyond the approved amount. That sort of simplifies, because otherwise this is hard to figure out.
Because it's happened both times. We've had it happen before I went to bid, but we've had number, projects that have come back. So they were street or whatever, and they were bid a while ago, and then we've had to increase the amount. And some of them have gone back and some of them haven't, which is the discussion for maybe we need a straightforward, clear policy. And then at the end of our discussion, we decided to just keep it the same. So for, one of the questions that I would have, because I didn't anticipate having the conversation right now, would be how many of our projects, if that was our threshold, how many projects would then have had to go back to Measure R? Like, would that have been 10% or would that be like 90% of the projects? I mean, some of it right now is because of COVID still or supply chain issues, right? I don't know that our numbers have always historically needed so much adjustment every year. And there's also been a delay on projects where things were approved, but then they didn't go through until two years later and now prices have skyrocketed. But for me, when I look at that, I was, I was in support of a clear policy, so it was straightforward, because it felt a little like, send this back, but not this. So it's clear for the public. So it's clear for the public, for us, for the commission. But if it's going to be sending a lot of projects that are for smaller amounts of money, I don't know that I would necessarily be in support of that. But it's hard to know without kind of looking at where we've been and being able to judge based on, on the data of what has been our, his, our practice the last year or two, or where our bids have come in, or how far off we've been on how many projects, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, but to me, it's what's considered small, what's a small amount. And 10% can, on 100, isn't that much, but on a million, it is. So it's just that, at the end of the day, I just want more input from the measure our committee. And, and I think that's why I'm leaning to way, the way option number two is written. If, if we have to make additional appropriations, it goes back to measure R for their input. And like I said, if it starts getting silly, we can look at it again. But I just don't, I don't want to bypass the measure our committee. And I think that's how I felt with, when we voted for option number one. That we'll approve everything and then we'll give you an FYI at the end of the day.
And I would just say, I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree that we should get their feedback. But they have approved everything. Everything has gone through them. And the ultimate, you know, the only body that can approve funds to be spent would be this body of five. So I think that things are going through them and we are getting their input. But I hear you that having more input is important.
It's just, to me, it's having that extra set of eyes on something and a recommendation before we make a decision. And, and it's like any other committee or commission, that we rely on planning commission to do their job and go through everything before it comes to us. The same with streets and trails and parks and rep, et cetera.
Councilmember Hannah, councilmember Bash, do you have anything to add to our discussion? Okay. Did you have anything to add? Any thoughts? All right, so we have a motion.
I have no public comments on this. I just want to reiterate that we're going with second option is in the motion. This option requires additional appropriations to be reviewed and recommended by the committee before the city council consideration of the adjustment.
And we're amending, so we're adopting the resolution with that edit, I believe that's the motion. Well, that's what the motion on the floor is.
Yeah, yes, okay. Please vote.
There you go.
And motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you. So we are going to go on to item number four, which is our public comments. So I'll call him the city clerk.
This is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental body shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. My first public speaker is Bill Naylor.
Evening, counsel. Just like to take a minute to update you on some of the work that the volunteers in the community are doing on your trails. We continue to do out, go out and make the repairs on the wood fencing as best we can. As most of us are getting a little bit older, it's getting slower and slower in the amount that we get done. But in the meantime, we have been attacking the vinyl fencing caps that keep being broken. Now, in the last year, we have had approximately 200 caps donated to the city for repair, along with a number of caps that the city has purchased for repair. And a lot of those seem to be in areas where the local schools are. I know at one of the previous council members' meetings, council drum, or Mayor Gunn Meyer indicated that she'd be probably talking to the principal over at the high school about the, the new vinyl fencing caps on Second Street. I have talked to some other principals, and we've seemed to help get some of the things resolved. But most recently, we observed a number of caps being broken on Corona. And that was from the element, I think it's an elementary school, between fifth and sixth, all the way over to Sixth Street. And that was over 50 caps that were broken just in that one section. Now, that, that's, you know, not a whole lot of money, but when you start adding in man hours and such to have to replace that. It took two of us, at least two hours each, to go out the other day and replace those caps. And I was unable to finish that project because I ran out of caps. Now, I did put in a request to staff, and I'm still waiting to see if they're able to acquire some additional caps. But it seems like in the school areas. So we did talk to the principal, and actually, while we were out there, one of the parents came out to us and said they had actually caught a group of kids breaking the caps. And they chastised them, gave them a really hard time, took their pictures, and actually took them back to the principal there at the school on Corona. So I'm hoping that the principal took some action to get their attention. Because we just, it's a lot of work going out and fixing those caps. But I do want to thank the volunteers and the community that come out and help us with these projects. And again, if there anybody who's interested in helping, see me after the meeting, and I'd be happy to, to sign you up and help get the work done. Thank you.
I have no further comment, Mayor.
Yes, council member Newton.
I did see Bill and his bride out there on Corona Avenue and did stop and thanked him for volunteering. And he was telling me about how he was running short, so I did mention that. Just go over to Valley City Fence and help yourself to whatever caps you need. Thank you. Not for you.
All right. Item number five, legislative matters. Do any members of the council have questions or concerns on item 5A? Are there any public comment cards on item 5A?
I have no public comment cards.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Second.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. So item number six will be our discussion and action item 6A, adoption of a resolution by city council for adopting and authorizing the ADU legalization pilot program. So we'll have our community development director report on this, please.
Yes, good evening, council. This item is agenda item 6A, which is the draft of the ADU legalization program. As a council may recall, this item was presented to the council on September 6th. And basically, it was a draft program to be able to have our council provide input. And that way, we can come back with a program that the city council could adopt. And it was for the purpose of a accessory dwelling unit, which is an ADU legalization program to encourage the legalization of second units constructed without permits. And the purpose of the item 29 is for the city council's formal adoption of a two-year pilot program. And that's the recommendation from staff, that it be a pilot program, which stipulates the process and fee waivers. So basically, what this is doing is providing a pathway for legalization of second units that may have been constructed without permits, to bring them into compliance through the ADU process. And the intent is to have this program create kind of an easy way or a simplified way for members of the community to come forward, basically by starting with a self-assessment to, and eligibility conversation with staff, which is confidential, to see if they would like to move forward. And followed by an optional initial inspection, all the way to final inspection, to the point of having the ADU legalized. And so that there is a permit issued, and we receive credit for housing production. As far as the program components, as a summary, again, the program is intended to be short-term. Well, not short-term, but an opportunity as a pilot program for us to come back and analyze it, to see if it's working or needs to be some adjustments. The program will consist of a handout that will be made available to the public and will consist of the pathway to legalization, which was in the previous slide, a self-assessment questionnaire that was included in your resolution. And that will allow the applicant or homeowner to determine whether they want to move forward. And a page for frequently asked questions, and it kind of, again, helps them to determine whether they want to move forward. And it'll also provide them with cost estimates if they do so, you know, would like to get a cost estimate. The construction cutoff date units will be, that were constructed prior to January 1st, 2018, will be eligible. And this is consistent with state law. And what we're going to be looking more than anything is for a compliance correction on items that deal primarily with, that address health and safety issues. As far as fee incentives, these are items that we discussed the last time. Staff's recommendation is that if they do want to, the homeowner does want to do a initial inspection to see what will be required as far as compliance, that costs, there is a special inspection cost and it's $265. Our recommendation is that that be waived. For ADUs that are under 750 square feet, the recommendation is that city building permit fees be waived, with the exception of the initial plan check fee and any state or pass-through fees, such as school fees and initiate fees. And the reason why staff is recommending that the, what is it, the plan check fee not be waived as far as the city fees, is so that it gives an, enables them or gives them kind of a push to follow through with the, with the process. For ADUs 750 square feet or more, the recommendation is for a waiver of 50% of the development impact fees. And the level of fee waivers will not exceed $250,000 for the duration of the program, even if it exceeds the two years. And in your packet, we did include, it was a revised or updated, probably more simplified sample for ADU fees that are typically applicable for ADUs. And with that, staff's recommendation is that the council adopt Resolution 2023-64, adopting and authorizing the accessory dwelling legalization pilot program. And with that, I will conclude and answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alma, for the report. Berwin, any questions of staff on this item? Greg? Any question?
Just one at this time, Alma. On the fee waivers, onsite inspection, the special inspection, is that done by deputy inspector? Or would that be like a building official or our building inspector?
It would be our building official.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine, any questions?
One question. So the way that it's being presented, it would offer fee reductions under 750 and up to 1,200 square feet. We could adjust that if we wanted to. For instance, if we only wanted to provide incentives to smaller ADUs, like cap at 1,000 square feet?
Yes, that's correct. That's entirely up to the city council.
Kevin, any questions at this time? All right, so then we're going to go ahead and go to public comment on this item.
Mayor, I have one public comment card. Jody Weber.
Good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity to address this issue. I was not present at the September meeting, and I frankly don't know and didn't have an opportunity to research what basis was for this. But it appears based on everything that I did review, that the incentive is obviously to try and get these dwelling units in compliance and permitted when in actuality, the homeowner did not take the time to actually follow the rules, the policies, the procedures for health, safety, and welfare in this community, which the code already permits or provides for. And so my concern is, is that the permit charges and costs are to cover staff's time in addition to other incentives for those costs. But my problem is, is that anybody who did it right to begin with had to incur far greater costs. And now you're actually incentivizing somebody to potentially build an accessory unit in the event that this pilot program might work, such that you're going to extend it to accessory units that are built without a permit after 2018. So I'm just a little concerned by the fact that I understand the incentive to waive costs. Some of those costs that are not being waived will cover staff costs. But I think that there is something that should be looked at in regard to the fact that you're also building the potential for an incentive that people could build an accessory unit, just that if this pilot program works, they can build a unit now, and then you'll just extend the program for accessory units that are built without a permit later on. So the, the fees exist for a particular purpose, which is to cover the costs. And so now you're asking citizens who did it right, or citizens who don't have an accessory structure, to now subsidize staff costs because you're waiving it now. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
I have no further public comment.
All right, thank you. We will be bringing it back to council for discussion and action. We'll go to this side.
Yeah, Alma. On that one, one slide you had up there about the maximum $250,000, would you go back to that, please? Right there? Okay, would you? Okay, let's see it again now. Explain that last sentence, sir.
So basically, the, the city would be committed to spending, spending that amount in the, in the fee, in the way of fee waivers. So we would keep track of how, how many fee waivers the cost throughout the entire program, depending on the duration. And it could not, the entire, for the entire amount of time, would not be able to exceed to 250,000. So for example, if somebody comes in and, you know, the fee waiver for them is 10,000, the next one 10,000, we would keep track up to 250,000. So we would not be able to go over that. Once that is, is done, then, you know, basically, the program comes to an end.
Okay, so that's total. Everybody that you approve are there that pays a fee, but it's got to go, it gets to $250,000 and the program ends?
Pretty much.
And if I can add, that's because in the housing element, the city's housing element, this was the commitment that was made to the Department of Housing and Community Development, that we would offer this program and offer up to $250,000 that we would pay, $250,000 towards it. So that was our commitment we made to the state when they approved our housing element. So that's the number we have to hit.
Okay.
We could do more if we want, but we can't do less.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, any comments?
Yes, thank you. Let's say on the, the path to legalization, I support the pathway that you have proposed up to the point of, or up to the point and including the fee waiver for the building official to come out and visit with the homeowner. We're looking at the cost of $265, which I think, I'm fine with that being in that, in that path of legalization. From that point on, my concern is, in a sense, that this rewards bad behavior. That my neighbor built an ADU before 2018, right? Didn't bother with permits, didn't bother with health and safety codes, just did it, right, and never got caught. I build an ADU. I hire an architect. I pay permits and fees and everything else, play it all down the line. I'm going to feel like I'm punished. I'm going to feel like I'm punished, and if I see then, my neighbor, okay, goes through this legalization, and you're going to waive the majority of his fees that I paid for mine, I'm coming to the counter, and I'm going to ask for a rebate, to be treated the same way. And I don't want to bring, well, I will bring it up. And Alma, you know this, that you had a consultant working for you that was a Norco resident that did this entire, that did this exact thing to us a few years ago. Is it coming back to you? We rebated money to him. So, to me, I think that's, it's not the direction I want to go. I think it rewards bad behavior. Make the path, here's the path of way you can follow, but you're going to, you're going to pay the same amount of fees that everybody else does. That's all I have at this point.
Catherine?
A question, Alma. The 2018 year, where, what's the, where did that come from?
It came from the state statute, where, you know, the city, basically, if somebody comes, constructed a unit, and they want to convert it, make it a legal ADU, prior to 2018, the city basically has to approve it, and, you know, address health and safety issues. So that's where it came from, that's where the cutoff, and I just wanted to make it consistent with, with the state offers.
Okay, thank you. So, so I wanted to respond to some of the public comment, and then I think that Council Member Newton, some of his comments were in line with that as well. And the rewarding bad behavior, so this is where we are. We have a number of units that have been built illegally without permits. So the problem has already existed, and when we put together our housing element, we have to show programs and policies that are addressing units and creating units in our city. These are things that we have to do by law, we can't opt out of them. And one of the things that we had been talking about here for a long time is, we have housing in Norco, and we're not getting credit for it, right? Like, we have these granny flats, we have units that are out there, but we're not getting any credit for them. What can we do to get credit for what we have, so we can show the state, hey, we have units in Norco, where we, we do have RENA numbers, to show progress, so that we can stay in good standing with the state, because we are legally required to do that. And so, to do that, part of our housing element, something I've heard since I've gotten on council that we've asked for, is what can we do? How can we try to bring these units into compliance? And so, the mechanism that was decided to use was to come up with a program to provide an incentive, because otherwise, there's no incentive for anyone to legalize it, right? They already built it, they're already out of compliance, this isn't the neighbor that's following the law, they're just putting up what they want and hoping that nobody reports it. And so I understand that we certainly don't want to incentivize people to do such a thing, and I don't think anyone up here has any intention to change that date, right? Because after 2018, it was ministerial, it has to be ministerial, we have to be in line with state law, so anyone who wanted to be, build an ADU, could follow the state law and come in and do that in Norco, but before that, there wasn't a process to do that, which is also why people might have done it without following the proper route, because there wasn't a route where they would just have to be approved. And so, the whole purpose of minimizing these fees is to try to get people to bring them into line, so we can get crowded for their housing. So I understand, we don't necessarily, you know, I understand the value of not wanting to incentivize that, and I understand that that's not fair for people who went through the process and did it legally, but if we don't do something to incentivize people, how do we get these units online, and how do we get credit for the, the units that we have in Norco? I certainly don't have an intention to extend the date, and the amount we came from the housing element, we committed to using a certain amount of money for the program. So we've committed to doing this program, and we've talked about it a lot, how do we get these units in line, and this is kind of the, the best solution that we've come up thus far, and what we've seen other cities do. I wish it was as easy as everyone followed the process and the law that they should, but unfortunately, that's, that's, that's not where we are. So a lot of work went into this, we had a lot of discussion last time. I think that there's definitely an incentive to legalize it because of the reduction in fees. Without that, I don't know how many people will voluntarily come forward, and I don't know that we have the capacity to go out and try to route out all of the illegal ADUs that are in our city. I don't think we have the capacity to do that with the staff that we have, and so we want people to come and do that on their own, so that we get credit for what's in our city, and we can show reasonable progress.
So I, I guess, as we look at this, it's not fair. It's not fair. The reality is that these laws are not fair to individuals who purchased a home and expected to have a certain zoning that they may have fought for, they elected people for, and that a group of uncaring strangers have decided that they're going to take over your community. It's not fair. And as we heard from our seminar the other day, they don't care, it's pack and rack 'em. That's where we're at. It's actually insanity, because there's not enough water, there's not enough police, there's not enough fire, and the people that actually understand that are the last people we need to listen to. So the idea was, is that maybe we can protect our large lots, our elbow room, by finding ways to legalize homes that people have been living in sometimes for decades? Or, if we don't meet our RENA demands, and, you know, we just saw Mr. Weiner just decided to extend forever SB 35, which is destroying communities, it's literally destroying communities. It's either apartments, or we have to come up with a way to legalize our existing units, and we have hundreds of them. What's our, what's our number?
Our RENA number is 454.
How much?
454.
So we have to come up with 454 units. I swear, I have 70 of them just on my street alone. I mean, every other house has a, a living unit. So, I just think that we don't have a choice, we're in a battle to protect a certain community. We're, I mean, and it's actually a battle that every community's in the middle of. And the bottom line is, is when you, I just came back from League of Cities, everybody's upset about this, but guess what? Nobody's listening. And so, I'm, I totally, I totally agree with Catherine, we're trying to play the game, we're trying to come up with a way for people to live and to protect where we live, since they already exist. I think we need to try to find a way to legalize them. Unfortunately, with all the fees, not, not the local fees, we're cutting everything to the bone, schools, all the things the state and county and federal government want us to do, and the joke of all of it is, an ADU to build right now is almost $300,000. So, it's, it's frustrating. I mean, I wish, I wish we could just legalize them all and put them in play, and, but then the other issue, of course, is going to be, is that five years from now, four years from now, they may just say, you know what, we've changed our mind, we're going to add another 5,000 units. And so, I don't think we have a choice, I think we need to do everything possible. And, you know, the other thing is, is we're actually doing something so that if somebody has built an illegal ADU next door to somebody else, it's not going to burn down. And I think that we need to make sure that we try to do that. We're trying to make it so it's safe. So if we can, and I totally, Greg, I'm right there with you, but none of it's fair anyway. I mean, it's so frustrating. So I, I, I agree with Catherine on this, I think that she made the point better than I did, we need to, we need to approve this, and if we can get 20 of them, I think we're ahead by 20. But the goal is, is so that we're not, I mean, I see Erica sitting there, she knows the law better than I know, and, I mean, we've got some big stuff coming at us, and if we could figure out a way to protect her, that's what we're really doing, we're trying to fairly protect our community. So I'm in total favor of this, I wish we could do more, but we can't, but I'm in total favor of this thing. It's just another piece, Robin's always saying, it's just another piece in our tool chest to try to protect the lifestyle. That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
And if I may, just real quick, one of the things that does happen a lot, we have homeowners that come in, unfortunately, they bought the property with the condition existed already, and they come in, you know, hopefully trying to legalize it, and that, that does come up, so just wanted to keep sure you could tell them.
Well, I go back to when we actually would have a place that would have a very livable unit, and we'd make them strip it apart. When I bought my place in 95, you all know this, they wanted me to tear down the secondary unit that was on my property. I discovered I had permits for everything, so I got lucky, which, by the way, I wonder if we get credit for that, that one unit on my property? I would, I, because I'm paying taxes on it, so.
Thank you, Alma, for your comment. I agree wholeheartedly, and I think honestly, that's where we're going to find most of the legalization, is folks that buy a property in Norco, it was already there, it wasn't legal, they come in town, or they've moved from another house and want to make it legal. I have been in a situation similar with one of the houses I purchased in Norco had something already there, and so, you know, at that point in time, the option was to take it down. And so, I really do feel with the, the property values and, and some of that, that this legalization really is going to be for those new owners, or folks that have moved to a new place. If we think about the ADUs in some of our neighborhoods, you know, I, if I had to guess, I'd say maybe 20% of those, you know, that we've been discussing up here, will likely come up for legalization, because it's still going to be a pricey venture for them to get that, and this is just another example where we've been put in a, in a tough spot by the state, and, and the laws, and things like that, that are, are in place. And as I think about, you know, the early discussions on this process, it was really about, we know the ADUs are here, they're not having, the older ones are not having a negative impact on the animal keeping large lots, and so it was really about, what can we do to get those to count, instead of having to buy, you know, have new stuff built to meet our RENA numbers? So that was kind of where, you know, for me, that's where I was, and my headspace was, if these are already here, and we can somehow make them meet those numbers, so we're not having new construction, that would be ideal. So, you know, goes back to what Kevin said, I think this will potentially be a tool, but I know it's certainly not going to solve the issues that we're facing with the, the legislation coming out of Sacramento. So, my hope is that as these people come to Norco, buy their houses, and want the little piece of heaven that we have here, and they have one of those, you know, unpermitted buildings in their, on their lot, that they'll go ahead and go through the process to get those legalized through this pilot program. So, that's all of my comments on this particular issue. Greg?
Alma? I can read the room, I know where I'm going, I'm going to be on this deal, but the path to legalization, what is our projected staff cost for that? It's, because you, you meet with the building inspector, or the building official, you have staff time, initial inspection, counter help, that, that whole process, to start the path of legalization, what's our projected cost impact?
I don't have that number, but the reality is, that's part of the incentive to get them to come forward, is, is, you know, kind of, in a sense, holding your hand to kind of get it to that point of legalization, but the cost, I don't have that number. I mean, I can definitely come up with an estimate, but at this point, I don't have that.
Well, I mean, we need to spend $250,000, if that's what we're committed to, but a portion of that $250,000 ought to be allocated to all the staff time that's spent getting to that point.
That, that, that's within the purview of, of the city council, and again, we, staff does kind of do that now, even without, you know, we assist the homeowner to, especially when they, you know, they come in and, and speak to staff, to how to, you know, get the, get their, their construction without permit legalized. We do that now, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of what we provide as a service to our, our citizens of the community. But again, the, the, making it easy for them, in a sense, laying it out, is, is an incentive to them to come forward, because a lot of times, just the fact, oh man, I have to go in the city hall, what am I going to do? It enables them to incentivize them, we're going to help you get there, so.
I guess it's a call-in question next. So, how are we going to deal with, when I come in and go, I did it right, where's my rebate?
That's, yeah, they're not, they're not entitled for a rebate, it's going to be, it's going to be some hard discussions at the planning counter, but we, all the policy arguments have been hashed out, and there's, there's going to be some disappointed people, but.
Great. So that, when they're disappointed at the planning counter, or at the building counter, they're going to call us, and what's your, what are you going to tell them? As a group? I'm going to call you, Kevin, and go, hey, I did it right, man. Where's my money? What I will do is, I will tell that person, we're trying to protect the lifestyle. How much time does it take to do a, the, the, you know, 400 apartments at the corner of Third and Hamner? How much staff time? Now, if we can actually hit 454 RENA numbers, does life become easier for all of us? Until the next cycle, which they can change at any time. I mean, the point is, is that, you know, it's just, Greg, I actually agree with you, it's not fair.
I know, it's frustrating, Kevin, I'm not meaning to argue with you, but it's the conversation.
But what I will tell them is, we're trying to protect the lifestyle, we're the last one.
Right.
We're the last one. I mean, you think about it, the historic district, it's only protected because the clowns that put these things together all live in historic districts.
Right.
So they can't say nothing.
I mean, I get it, but.
It's a, it's a.
Tell me how to convince a resident that, yeah, we're going to protect the, we're going to protect the lifestyle, but, hell, man, it's still costing me $35,000 more.
Again, this isn't us. We're literally being held to enforce legislation made by the state, and so I think for, for me personally, that is the argument, like, we're, they're forcing our hand, so how do you change that? People need to do their research, people need to vote, people need to understand where these folks are from, what their policies are, what their ideals are, and when they're doing this voting, and, because that's ultimately the only answer that we have, is an educated and informed electorate. So I don't think it's a, like, an us versus the residents, it really needs to be turned around to what it is. Our state legislators are dictating what's happening in the city of Norco with housing, period. That's what it is.
And with that, what they've done is, the reason there is a emergency, is to circumvent the state constitution. The reality is, there's thousands of empty homes across the state of California, Caltrans owns a ton of them, so it's to circumvent the rights of the citizen. It's just, that's how it is, and there's not a thing we can do about it.
I have just one other comment, so in here, it's, we said it would be a two-year pilot.
That's correct.
Is there, I didn't see, unless I missed it, like, an update? Can we get an update? Do we want to wait a year in, six months, to see if anyone's taken advantage? That was part of the thing we talked about last time, right, is, we need some kind of program to start, because we committed to doing it in our housing element, so we, we must do something, because we have committed to the state that we would do some sort of program to legalize ADUs, and so we can start, and we can see what happens, and adjust as we go, right? So, if there's a bunch of people, you know, we can change the incentive, we can make the incentive less, correct, or no? Right?
Yes.
Yes, um, an individual incentive could be less, but we have to, we have to be on par to spend our two hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct, yes. But we can reevaluate how the program is working and make changes as needed based on whether we have anyone who is coming forward to legalize their ADU. So can we get an, get an, if, if?
My suggestion would be that we are already required to provide HCD with a compliance report annually with regard to our housing element. So when the planning department prepares that report, then we, that's our trigger to evaluate the progress. So we'll already be on that cycle. So that report typically goes to planning commission, correct? And then
That is correct.
We get a copy of it. When is it usually done though? In the spring?
It's due, it's due to the state in April. So we have
So then we'll have a however many months to kind of evaluate. That's a good check mark. Not quite a year, but enough time.
Okay.
You know, another, another piece of this, if I may, is you put in a second unit on your property, there is an increase in your property tax. So, you know, and I'm, I'm with Rob and I, I was involved in two places that we actually made them tear out before this all happened, tear out their set, three of them, their secondary units. Whereas they wanted to legalize it, but we didn't allow them to do that. So I'm, I'm kind of with Rob and I think right as we change over ownership, I think that we're going to find more and more of these. So I'm kind of hoping that's going to happen.
Yes. And one of the things to keep in mind is, you know, construction without permit is typically, could be considered a public nuisance. So by getting rid of these unpermitted, um, buildings, you're basically addressing elimination of both nuisances and, um, you know, bringing these big buildings into compliance for, um, you know, health and safety. So you're affecting the entire community by, you know, eliminating these situations, which is a benefit.
So with that, then I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the ADU legalization pilot program.
Say.
And I'm going to have to call for a vote. Our IT staff has stated that everything has gone down for IT. So it is not working. So I will call the vote. Councilmember Newton? Councilmember Hannah? Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash? Mayor Grumeyer?
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Newton voting no.
All right. Thank you. Going on to item six B is an authorization of a letter to the Keeper of the National Register regarding Norco's nomination to expand the Lake Norconian Club Historic District. So I'm going to call upon the city manager for this report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I'll defer to Mayor Protem Bash to share more information with you, but as we noted in the staff report, um, a number of years ago, the city was successful in seeing the Lake Norconian Club Historic District placed on the National Register for Historic Places. So it's a wonderful accomplishment, recognizing the historicity of the property. Um, and then flash forward, the city has been seeking to expand that, that, that district to include additional parts of the naval base. And again, it's so, such importance to the history of the United States dating back into the twenties through the forties. So the nomination was originally submitted in, I think, what year was it? Before twenty twenty-two, before I came, how about that? I'm not sure, but twenty eighteen. And it was, it was, there was a number of correspondents going back and forth during that time. Ultimately, the city was issued a denial letter in fall of twenty twenty-two by the bedkeeper of the, um, the register, but with a caveat that we should reapply and it provides some additional and different information in our reapplication. So subsequent to that, um, Mayor Protem Bash had been obtaining some information um, using federal freedom of information requests. And it sort of came through that some attention to the fact that some of the discourse among the agencies, in our opinion, was not fair to the, the consideration of the Norco's position. So, um, again, I'll defer to Mayor Protem to maybe provide a little more color commentary there. So uh, the recommendation here is that we provide a letter back to the keeper. We're just going on record and I doubt, sort of out showing that discourse and asking that in light of that discourse, they reconsider their denial of our, of our nomination. In the meantime, on a parallel track, um, the Mayor Protem and our historic resources consultant Bill Wolfman have been working on a new submittal and expect we'll be doing that. But just for the sake of fairness, we feel it's appropriate to put, um, the agencies sort of on notice that we feel we have not been treated fairly in this original process.
So Bill and I, Bill, I don't know if you know this, but Bill had a terrible bicycle accident. He's getting out of rehab tomorrow. Broke some ribs and punctured a lung and all kinds of stuff. Um, but nevertheless, the, the good thing that came out of all of this is that it forced us to go back into the nomination and we we were just discovering some very cool things, like for example, I didn't know that President Roosevelt directed the purchase of this resort. I didn't know that. He wanted to make it the West Coast Polio Center. And so it's also just discovering a lot of things, but then, um, they kept putting off our FOIA requests, putting it off, putting it off. And I finally received it about six weeks ago and truthfully, I was shocked. I kept telling Bill, uh, and even Wayne Donaldson, who's one of our consultants that, uh, read, Wayne Donaldson is a former SHIPO, former chair of the ACHP. He's one of the top preservationists in the nation, one of the top historians. He's an architectural historian and an architect. And we didn't know what a technical problem was and what a substantive problem was. Um, it took a year to go through their rebuttal, which was eighteen pages. And it's just a specious bunch of nonsense. And it actually was just nonsense. All of it. But it sounded really good, which the Navy's really good at doing. But as I read this, I realized that they had been given unfair access. If you've read the, the, the very rough draft, um, they didn't notify us. They went to the keeper within months of our, of our unanimous decision uh, by the state, uh, commission. They actually lied to us in an email and said that, and to SHIPO also, that, uh, uh, they hadn't made a decision yet. It was, uh, over a year later after they'd already approached the Keeper of the National Register, Paul Lucignan, um, that they notified us. And at that point, the Navy, actually, the interpretation of the federal preservation law was the Navy could say yes or no. So we were stuck. They since changed that through Mr. Lucignan, the keeper, uh, one of the keeper historians on the West Coast, he changed that. And as I began to read this, I realized three things, and these are the three critical issues. One, the substantive issues are not our nomination. And we actually have emails where they acknowledge it. So what they did was they said, well, technically you can't respond to our response to your nomination. So, so technically you're not following the rules by responding to us. So technically you have to start all over again. It's so stupid. And then we discovered that, um, they really do know that they haven't submitted anything substantive. They're simply trying to delay us. And what's really amazing is they actually, they asked, uh, Mr. Ohnassian, the Don Fippo, to give back or to weigh in, say, what do you think of this nomination? And by the way, we need some documentation about your rebuttal to the nomination. He didn't supply that. He basically told the keeper what to do, send it back. I decline their nomination. And he simply does not have the authority to do that. But what's most disturbing is behind the scenes, they essentially are saying, I mean, they were doing things behind the scenes we had no knowledge of. And they're saying, we're not, once we find out about it, we're not allowed to rebut it. And so, um, what you had before you was something put together so that you could get the full picture. It needs to be condensed. It needs to be made probably nicer. But the reality is, is if this is really how historic preservation works, I mean, just to give you some backstory, in nineteen eighty-eight, we had a historian here in Norco that said the Navy base are something historic. There's also this old big resort. And they had that historian disappear. And the facilities manager called the keeper and called SHIPO, and he did this in writing and said, all the buildings are made of wood. And nobody checked. In two thousand, Norco overturned the nineteen ninety-seven Ogden Navy Study because they said all the buildings had lost all architectural integrity. They're all different. They're all changed and there's no history here anyway. So in two thousand, Knox Mellon, who became SHIPO, overturned it. We then overturned the, uh, ASM report from two thousand ten. And we got a unanimous decision to, um, proceed with our nomination. And then it just got, you know, we hit COVID, we hit all those things. But ultimately for me, it's almost like if this is how it's going to be, if we don't call them out, they're just going to do the same thing again. And the bottom line is, is that this is a the good news of their rebuttal was it forced us to look at what they said. Had they actually quoted their own documentation, they would have had to support our nomination. But this is a very historic site. It's a one of a kind site. And so, um, I actually, as I told Lori, we, you, you've entrusted Bill and myself to actually, we could have actually sent this letter, but this is a big move to go to the Keeper of the National Register and say, we absolutely disagree. And by the way, you didn't give us access. And I think that it's important that, uh, you know, we, we, we're the way this is supposed to work, uh, section one oh six of the historic preservation code says it's all written for interested parties. And we as a city interested party are even a higher elevation. And we've just been treated like crap. And enough is enough. You know, right now, as I look at the Norconian, which was the surgical center is still there, the first neurosurgery unit in the history of the Navy is still sitting there. It's all there. But as you look at the Heinsberg and, um, the stuff in the ballroom, it's beginning to be destroyed by water. If we could get this on the net, expand the register, bring attention to it, maybe we could do something. You know, before the whole thing falls down. Um, anyway, that's, that's kind of the backstory of the whole thing. I, I, I don't mean to belabor it. I, I'm hoping to get support tonight. I'm also hoping what, what we'll do is we're going to have to craft it a little bit better. I want to get the Lake Norconian Club Foundation involved in this. I would like to, one of the things I discovered is we were told that SHIPO could not, could not, um, protest. Well, found out she can't protest. And then the big threat of Mr. Manley, who's one of the key Don Fippo culprits is that well, and she may take it back to the commission and say there's problems. I got news for you. I would love to stand in front of that commission again. I would love to talk to Navy people because one of the big things they've done, which is illegal is they've shut us out. And they just make fun of us. You ought to read, I didn't include all the emails. If you looked at the few I included, they just make fun of us. They just think we're idiots. And they talk about their integrity and their, you know, their stick. The truth is, the only people who have integrity are me, Bill Wolfman, and the Lake Norconian Club Foundation. And in my opinion, this council that's hung in there with this whole thing for, what, twelve years now? So anyway, that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you, Lori.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead. Uh, does council have any questions for Lori or Kevin at this time? No? All right. Do we have? Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
I have two questions. Um, one I sent to Lori and that was just, um, because the recommendation is that we authorize the letter and my question was who the letter would be from?
Um, it can either be from the city manager or it can be from the city council or from the mayor. I think at this point, I think that they, and because this is going to go to the Navy, it's going to go to local command. One of the asks is, is with this, we're hoping, I'm going to be, we're going to be talking to the captain at the, the tenant base here and the captain Seal Beach. I'm going to ask them to support this reversal. The joke of all this is, is the federal government can do whatever they want. To say overriding circumstances. But it's a little harder. And, uh, and we're, we're amenable. So I think it should either come from council or come from the city manager.
And then my second question is for some context in terms of why sending this letter versus following the process that you've started with the revision and resubmittal that was recommended by the keeper in the denial?
What we discovered is, is that the keeper, one of the asks is, give us your independent analysis. What actually happened was, is that it's complicated. In October of twenty, um, eighteen, they sent, Mr. Manley sent their technical review to the keeper. That very day, the person who received it said, oh, they found something substantive. There was nothing substantive in our view, but it was two hundred and sixty-two pages, thirteen elements. How would they know in twenty minutes if there was something substantive? And so that's how it's gone all along. And then, um, they just sort of sat on it, sat on it, sat on it, sat on it, hoping we forget it. We kept asking people, we asked Greg Smith. Greg Smith was, he knew about this thing going clear back to twenty nineteen. And we'd sit there and go to meetings, Bill and I, well, what's the status? Oh, I just don't know. I don't know what's going on. But then what they did was the keeper, Paul Lucignan, rather than, than expect Mr. Ohnassian, the Don Fippo, to, to support his staff. He said, well, what do you think? He said, well, I stand by our technical review. He didn't have to answer for anything that we can find. And said, I decline this nomination. We didn't know that was happening. Had we done that, I, I guarantee you, Bill Wolfman and I would have been on the phone and saying, what the hell are you people doing? Five days later, basically, the Keeper of the National Register just, just follows his instructions and said it on. He does not have that power to do that. So we're sitting here, you know, to rewrite a nomination is extraordinarily hard. And it's really hard because we discovered this was there's a whole aspect of phys- physical medicine we missed. This was the physical medic- medicine rehabilitation center for the entire Navy. We didn't know that. And it was actually one of their own documents that I went, whoa, what's this? That's why Sister Kenny came here and did polio treatment and stuff. We actually found out the first patients here weren't from Pearl Harbor. They were polio patients. So we're going to do all this work. It is grueling. And I just thought, I read this and I went, they don't respect us. They, we've caught them. They've been caught. I mean, they actually, if you've read that thing, one of the leading people that fought us was a guy named Alex Bethke. Alex Bethke actually accused us or apply, implied that we forged Wayne Donaldson's recommendation. The man was the head of the ACHP at the time. All they had to do is say, hey, Wayne, did you endorse this thing? That alone should have put this on the national register. That recommendation alone. They should have given, but they give us no weight. So we're going to kill ourselves and send this thing in. And what the Navy's doing is they're really just kind of, they're, they're playing the delay game, which is what they've done the whole time. This should have been on the national register in nineteen eighty-eight because you had two people, SHIPO and the keeper then who didn't do the jobs. The man called up, they had photos of the buildings, permanently constructed buildings. And the guy said, gee, they're made of wood. So I think we need to call them out. Reasonably shortly, they're going to get the second thing. We've talked to SHIPO, Julam Blanco, she's totally on our side. She actually said to me and Bill, she said, you know, my staff is kind of wondering why you guys are fighting so hard on this, but she said, I'm kind of glad you're, well, Lori, were you on that call? And she, that's what she said. She says, but you know what? They're, they're doing preservation. I mean, and unfortunately, part of the problem is, is just the people that do those jobs, truthfully, they don't know what they're doing. They, they, they just don't. And I actually think what happened was, is that Scott Keys, David Sproul, and Alex Bethke, we beat them up in front of the commission. And I think they got a hissy fit. And ultimately, it may well be the Department of the Navy just doesn't want to put it on the national register. But they don't have that right. They don't have the right to decline our nomination. And I think there's part of it too. It's not just about listing. I, I, I've told this story before. Um, I tried to save a hangar over at March Air Force Base. I got to it too late. There's eight hangars, historic hangars. And if you read the report on it, you'd never know anything historic happened there, just like this place. And a week after they tore it down, an old man came up to me and he said, I thank you so much for trying to save this hangar. And I said, oh, well, did you, did you serve here? And he said, uh, no, that's where I received my son. And what I found out was And what I found out was every Marine from Korea on, that's where they brought the bodies. That should have been... I mean, who missed that? And they missed it because if you put that into a HABs report, it does not get torn down. And that's what we're dealing with. What they're doing is they're erasing an incredible history. And so I think we need to stand up to them. Otherwise, we're going to send this in, the Navy's going to play the same game. The good news is, is that when you read it, we got to it. They're like, they're talking back and forth, and they're talking to attorneys. And normally, you know, "What's Norco?" They're loud now. We called all kinds of people. So, but I don't know. I think that, yeah, we could just turn it in and do that. But truthfully, I believe that Juliana Polanco needs to get involved in this, and she needs to protest. And I think we also need to go before the commission again and make them aware of what's happening. Because otherwise, there's no historic preservation. We're just playing games. Did that answer your question? Long winded, Tori.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have public comment?
Yes, we have one speaker card, Jody Weber.
Good evening, council. Thank you again, this opportunity to speak before you. I currently serve on the board of the Lake Norconian Club Foundation. I did have an opportunity to speak with Councilmember Bash last year after the Keeper's decision came down. I'm pleased to actually hear that efforts have continued with ongoing efforts with your FOIA request that has actually provided additional information of the lack of transparency that has gone on with the federal government in this regard. And I find it very interesting, based on some of the information in the emails that you have in your staff report, the federal preservation officer wrote a letter in response prior to the Keeper's decision. And in that letter, he says that effective historic preservation relies heavily upon rigor, accuracy, and clear articulation of information that supports national registry eligibility. And yet he goes through and recommends denial. And so what I find very interesting is that he professes clear articulation of facts, but yet the Keeper is not aware of the fact that we actually now have information from the FOIA requests that they have had communications among themselves to which we have not had an opportunity to provide clear articulation of the facts in response to what's been going on behind the scenes. So although the fact that... And in response to your question, Councilmember Aylman, the purpose behind the letter is to bring to the attention of the Keeper is that we are aware through the FOIA request that these potentially impermissible communications that have impacted the decision are now come to our attention. I have had discussions, obviously, with the board of the Lake Norconian Club Foundation, with Councilmember Bash. I provided other further legal recommendations and things that I don't necessarily want to put on the record now. But I do support the fact that we should bring it to the attention of the Keeper, that we are aware of the discussions that have taken place behind the scenes, to which we have not, as a city and an interested party under Section 106, had an opportunity to ever respond to. And my suggestion is, is to redraft some of that. As an attorney, when you get... I've had personal attacks, and we want to take offense. And we get down there, and we start writing or dictating really fast, and a lot of stuff comes out. But I do suggest some edits, and Mr. Bash and I have spoken about that. And I certainly appreciate probably some of the highlights that are in the redraft. But again, it's a process, and I appreciate the fact that we've had an opportunity to bring it to your attention, that there's a lot of work that's gone on here. And I certainly do support ongoing efforts by the city council and your support for the efforts that Mr. Bash has made, as well as in support of the Lake Norconian Club Foundation.
Our next speaker is Sue Bacon.
Good evening. I was pleased to hear that from our city manager and our council, Bash, that a letter is being proposed to be sent to the Keeper. There has been, from the very beginning of our involvement, the Lake Norconian Club has had to go up to Sacramento many times, dealing with the state to be told by the correctional department, "No one tells a warden what to do with their property." And then we get the Navy. No one wants to be told what they can do with the property. I get it. No one likes to be told anything. But the transparency of this whole process is so lacking. They just want to be able to say, "Deny, deny." That's not how it works. That is not how it works. More transparency definitely needs to be done. If the Navy is going to say, or deny, or say, "Get rid of this nomination," why? Why? I want to see the reports because they can't be backed up, and they know that. The letter is needed to the Keeper. History is important. I know I sound like a broken record. But in this day and age where history just seems to be forgotten, we learn from history. Our nation is going through great stress right now because people want to deny history of World War II. We learn from history. We have to continue to learn from history. In historic preservation, which I have been a part of for over 40 years, not every building is saved, but documentation is needed. Transparency on the process is needed, and that's what we're asking. Thank you.
May I have no further comments on this item?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. Any discussion? Councilmember Hannan.
I agree, we don't need to let this die. I mean, they just keep pushing, pushing, pushing. And I didn't realize that you'd been working on this since 2000, and what you said a while ago, Kevin.
City of Norco overturned, we paid for, the study that found that, "Oh, the Norconian actually did maintain historic integrity." "Oh, it is historic." And at that time, the man that wrote the report said, "By the way, we think the Navy base also has some very important things, but the Navy wouldn't have anything to do with it." And then we did overturn, like I said, the 2010 ASM report and got the unanimous decision. And that, Sue was there. It was actually embarrassing. The two Navy historians that were there were actually, if you saw the video, they were actually, the commissioners really lived into them. So, but yeah, we've worked on this a long time.
After I got on council, everybody was working on it. No, I support writing a letter and trying to let them know we're going to fight.
Councilmember Newman.
Is this corrected draft? Is this the final?
No, no, no. Because we, one of the things that's going to go through, we'll sit with Lori. It still has to be sent over to Bill, who gets out of rehab tomorrow. One of the things we will be, there's a few typos there, there's some...
There's some grammar.
Grammar redundancies. It's a rough, it's a very rough draft.
Okay. So my comment is, Kevin, over the years, the work that you've put into this, I mean, it's just, I'm proud of you in how you fight this. And so obviously, I support you 100%. The work of the LNCF goes without saying. And so, I'm just, like I said, I'm proud that you're a colleague, and you're the guy taking this one on, so you have my support.
This couldn't be done without the LNCR. They have been there since the beginning. You were president once.
That's correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Alaman.
Yes, I have on my first thing too, to thank, you know, everyone who's been involved in this and working for so long and made so much progress. You know, this really is a gem in our city, and we've been working really hard. Everyone has, those who came before me, those who hopefully will not come after me because we want to get somewhere. But in preserving this and finding a way, you know, to make it so the public can see what a special thing that it is in the preservation of it. That being said, so the item on our agenda tonight is to authorize the letter, which I hear and I see is still in a very draft form. So for me, it's hard to authorize a letter without seeing the actual letter. Do I support the sending of the letter? Yes. And in asking my questions, wanting clarity for others, right, who might not have been as involved in the process as many of you in this room are, in terms of what is our strategy in taking our different steps that we're taking. And certainly, with all the work that has gone into this, we want an answer, right? That is what we are seeking, an answer that is fair and an answer that is just. And when we got our denial, it still wasn't an answer because it said, "Oh, you're denied." But go and try this, right? And so again, moving along, you know, more work to be done. But we want to reach a conclusion. We want to finalize this process, right? And we're hoping that it's the outcome that we want it to be. So the way that the item is written, right, is to authorize the letter. I would like to see the letter before authorizing it. But do you have the support in writing it and having that final draft come back to be approved? Certainly from me, right, you would have that support. I think that the letter... I can see your passion in the letter. And I think that, you know, some other eyes would be helpful in making sure that it gets the intended impact on the receiver in the best light for what you're trying to accomplish and what is best for the property. So appreciate all that you've done on that.
Yeah, it's interesting because when I sent this to Lori, I said, "Lori, I can't see the forest for the trees." And I said, "You know what? This letter took a long time, but it needs to be condensed." And then we anticipate they will deny, but they've got to come up with reasons. And then what we do is we then submit under protest. And so it's just, all we're trying to do is have fair access. That's it. So I don't know. Can a letter be drafted, and then she's seen it? Or does it have to come back to council?
Yeah, it's up to all of you, how you want to handle it.
I was going to say, could it be in the same manner that we handle letters that go out regarding our legislative platform, where everybody sees the draft? Everybody responds to you individually, you know, and says, "Yep, we're good." And then it can just go?
Absolutely. So we could, we could run a final. I can just circulate it to you all. If there's any concerns that we can't resolve, we can put it on an agenda. Otherwise, we'll just get your concurrence, and we'll move forward.
Right. And again, Kevin, I don't have any issue either. I will tell you, I kind of echo Catherine's sentiments. And I think Jody discussed it a little bit. There is an intense amount of passion, especially in that first draft. And if I was to get, being an outsider, to get that letter, you would have just ruffled my feathers like nobody's business. And I don't know that that's like the approach that we would want to take. And so I kind of harken to you. You're upset, there's a lot of things going on, and you just got to get it all out? And then you're going to go back and rebut? No, I can't even imagine. I can't even imagine, yeah. So, you know, massaging that. And then, like you said, because you're so deep in it, you can't see the forest for the trees, having somebody that is back to see that perspective, yeah.
Like I said, that's exactly what I told her.
Yeah, it was...
I finally gave, I literally gave up. I said, "Do you know what? You have to look at this."
Yeah, it is very intense and strong vocabulary in there. So I, yeah, just massaging it and proving the point. Because again, we're talking about a lack of transparency. We're talking about trying to have a fair process and saying, "Hey, we have all this information. We know you weren't transparent. We know you weren't fair." I absolutely agree that that needs to be brought to the forefront. Again, if this is like kind of a systematic thing in the preservation world where things, backdoor discussions and deals are taking place, that's not just affecting Norco, right? That's affecting all over the place. So if Norco has to stand up and say, "Hey, we know this is happening, and here's our proof," then maybe that in itself opens doors for other people, right?
I agree.
So I think it's a huge thing. I'm 100% behind it. And I think we just handle it that way.
This is what you just said. That's why I sent it to her. It's a, to do what we're doing is huge. We're actually calling out, we're calling out the entire preservation world by doing this. So...
So do we need a motion? Or...
I do have one question. Is it possible to come from the entire city council? Or just have the mayor? I mean, if all four signatures could be on it, I think that would carry impact, particularly when a, five, what did I say?
You said four.
Five.
So you don't get to sign, Kevin. The rest of us will sign.
Because this will also be going to Tony Winicki. It'll be going to captains. I want them to know that we're unanimous behind this.
For me personally, as an elected, and the number of form letters and everything we get, I think an actual wet signature from all of us on a paper should carry a lot of weight because everybody came in or made the time to actually sign the document. So it's just my personal opinion.
Thank you very much, council. And thank you, LNCF. You guys deserve kudos. They've put in just as much work as everybody else.
All right. So in the motion, would we include authorization following our normal legislative letter process?
Sure.
Okay. So would you like to make the motion, Councilmember Bash? With that, I'll make a motion to authorize a letter to the Keeper of the National Register regarding Norco's nomination to expand the Lake Norconian Club Historic District that will follow our current process of legislative letters.
Second.
Please vote.
Erica, do you do things like this all these fail sometimes?
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's your answer.
Moving on to item number seven, this is a public hearing. We will have a first reading of a zone code amendment. So I'm going to go ahead and call upon our community development director.
Yes, council, good evening, Jen. Item is an update to our existing residential density ordinance ordinance for compliance with state law. And we have Erica Vega here that helped, assisted the city in drafting the update to the ordinance, and she will be doing the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Hello, Jen. Mayor, council members, it's nice to see you all. I put together a brief PowerPoint for this ordinance update. I'm going to jump right into it. I have a first session to get to. So why are we here? The state density bonus law was first enacted in 1979. And as a part of it, it requires each city and county to have their own density bonus ordinance on the books that governs how you implement the state law. You last updated your density bonus ordinance in 2013, 10 years ago. And since then, state legislature has amended the state density bonus law nine times. So your ordinance is a bit out of date at this point. So I'm going to ask that I assist with an update for all of you. What does the density bonus law do? It provides a housing developer with additional density for their project if it meets the criteria in this law. It has to provide a certain amount of affordable housing units that are deed restricted for 55 years or 45 years, depending on whether it's a rental unit or homeownership unit. And it's a sliding scale in terms of how much you can increase the density you get. So for as little as 5% of the units being set aside for affordable housing, they could get a really modest density bonus. But the more affordability they provide, the greater the density bonus that they're... And there's some additional bonuses that can be provided if they include childcare facilities as a part of their project or if they donate land to the city for the purposes of developing additional affordable housing. In addition to the density bonus, this law entitles them to request what are called incentives or concessions. They, again, it's a sliding scale, one to four, depending on how much portability they're providing in their project. And these incentives or concessions, a developer has to show that they would provide some kind of identifiable cost reduction that then makes the affordable housing feasible. There's also a provision that lets them request development standard waivers, and those are unlimited. But the development standards that they, that need to be waived are only the ones where it will render the development of the project impossible. It has to physically- And as if that wasn't enough, on top of all of it, they also entitle surrogate reductions in parking. So, these are the parking ratios of how many onsite parking spaces need to be provided with a density bonus project. So, per the city's code right now, across the board, for multifamily housing, it's two parking spots per, I believe that's correct. Yes, two spaces per. So, as you would see, they could get reductions there for studio, one bedroom, two. These do not count for the incentives and concessions. There's no discretion to deny density books. If they meet the criteria, they provide the requisite number of affordable units, they are entitled to it. There is discretion involved. There's no discretion to deny the parking ratio standard reductions. There is extremely limited discretion on the incentives, concessions, or development standard waivers. Their request has to either violate state or federal law or create a specific adverse impact as is defined in the Housing Accountability Act. I know it's been a little while. She may remember me talking to you about that before on prior projects. And so, I've just kind of copied here what that definition is in the Housing Accountability Act. And again, it just, it has to have some kind of quantifiable adverse impact that's based off of an objective written criteria that relates to public ownership. So, I think an example would be like, I don't want to comply with some fire code provision that is specifically for the safety of the residents of the building, something along those lines. It's very rare to see someone come in with a request like that because they know. So, with the ordinance that I have prepared for the City of Norco, the approach I've taken in consultation with staff is comply with the state law, no more, no less. So, that is what you have before you. And then on top of that, it just provides more detail as to how you apply for all of this. So, what are the application requirements, the process requirements, things like that? Because none of that is actually specified in the state statute. We also have enforcement provisions. As I mentioned previously, they do have to make sure that the units stay affordable for 55 years if they're rental units. And for for sale units, they have to be initially sold at an affordable housing price. And then you have an equity sharing agreement in place for 55 years. So, if there's a resale, the city gets a portion of the equity. And again, that, that depends on how, how many years they're entitled to. Obviously, if they make it to year 50, the city's share of that equity is relatively small because they fulfill so much of the term versus someone within year five.
Can I ask a question about that?
Perfect.
Okay. So, that was one of my, oh, that was one of my questions that I had though. So, with the equity sharing agreement, under what circumstances would that be in place? If that's if the city provided a financial incentive?
No, so that, that would apply to any for sale projects that qualify for a density bonus. Under the state density bonus law, there's only one category, and that's for projects that have for sale moderate income units. So, nothing that is set aside for low, very low, extremely low income is eligible for equity sharing because they're all considered to be rentable. But a for sale project that provides moderate income units would have that condition. And without any city financial incentive.
How many, have you seen any of those?
Not down here. I actually just, just got one approved up in Silicon Valley. But, yeah, I haven't seen any in like, in the, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have one others. When we're talking about the density bonuses based on affordability, so we have an inclusionary housing policy, how does that play, almost nodding? So, ours is 15%, right? We require them to, whoever, to build 15% affordable, or they could pay an in-lug fee, which would go into the housing fund. So, let's say they build 15%, do they then get automatically a 15% density bonus?
It's not, it's not a one for one like that. So, typically, the percentage of units that they're providing, they provide 15% units onsite that are affordable, they're not going to get a 15% density.
Right, but they would, but, but the fact that we're requiring it doesn't cancel out the bonus? Okay.
And also, I just want to clarify that state laws specifies that if they go the in-lug fee route rather than providing, providing the units onsite, you can't charge your inclusionary housing in-lug fee on the affordable. So, you can charge it on the market rate units that are part of the project, but you can't charge it on any of the other units. So, that would come up in a scenario where they're partially satisfied.
So, they're doing like 5%?
Exactly.
They, okay. So, they don't have to pay the fee on the 5% of the units? Because that, which makes sense, right, because those are affordable? Okay. And so, then it's dependent on the table, right?
Yes.
Of how many units?
Numerous, long tables.
Yes, so the size of the project determines really, the more units, the more bonus. Thank you.
Kevin, do you have any questions? Greg, do you have any questions? Berwin, do you have any questions? All right.
On these parking spaces that you have for each, each unit, is the handicap parking spots included in those numbers, or are they separate?
So, this, I believe they would be separate because you wouldn't, so for say, an apartment complex, that would be part of like visitor parking, you wouldn't provide the handicap spots for a specific unit. So, the parking that was referred on the side is the sort of dedicated parking or assigned parking for a particular unit in the, in the project. Any additional parking on top of it, like for visitor, you know, whatever the leasing center type parking, they would, that would be in addition. And that would have to be state codes with respect to making sure that there's sufficient. Thank you.
All right. The only question I have, Erica, in your experience with folks that come in with these projects that are looking to get the density bonus, what percentages are they typically kind of falling at, or where are they aiming for?
Okay, so it's a little all over the place. Right now, I would say for projects I've worked on in Inland Empire area, it's very tight. And it's because they're getting projects that are in conjunction with the county housing authority or getting some kind of financial assistance through a federal program that requires entire affordability or very, very high percentages of affordability, which then triggers the really high density bonus. But I have worked on other projects in other parts of the state that are much smaller come in. The one I just referenced earlier up in Silicon Valley, it had like 10% of the units, I want to say, set aside. So, it is a little all over the place.
Yeah, I was just wondering because some of the percentages on here are crazy high, so. All right. Any other questions for Erica? Thank you, Erica, for the report. Appreciate your help on this. So, we are going to go ahead and open our public hearing.
Mayor, I have no public comments up this side.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Council for Discussion and Action.
Erica, really, I thank you a lot, and your delivery told us everything we needed to know about your attitude toward these laws. What's really sad is I don't think people actually know these things are happening. And I just don't think they know. We really don't have a choice. We need to be compliant. We need to come up to today's requirements. But I really enjoyed your presentation. It's kind of almost tone of the cheek. I respect you a lot. I enjoyed your presentation.
Any other discussion? All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1106.
Please vote. And motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
All right. So, then Colin, do you have to read title or anything? I get lost on which ones you have to and which ones you don't.
You know, thank you. Let's read the title on this one. In order to the city council of the City of Norco, California, approving zone code amendment 202303. A city initiated proposal to amend Norco municipal code title 18 zoning, amending chapter 1865 residential density bonus provisions for compliance with state law.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, city staff. Any communications? Yes, Dana?
I just would like to kind of give a pre-introduction to Sophie. She is our new deputy city clerk that is joining us officially on October 30th. She brought it upon herself to come ahead and join us and see what's going on and what we do here. She comes to us from the City of Norco. She's in our code enforcement department, and I have stole her away from Alma. But we are so glad to have Sophie and looking forward to all the great things she has to add to our department.
Wonderful. Welcome, Sophie. Anybody else? City staff? All right. City attorney? City manager? Berwin? Greg?
Welcome to the city clerk's office. And the guy that yelled at you Saturday morning in the pickup truck at Fourth and Sierra when you were climbing the sign and pulling those signs down, that was me.
Catherine? I just want to thank Hellfire for their event that they had. I wasn't able to make it, but I know that many people did, and they really enjoyed it. And so, every time we have our, you know, public safety that has an open house or an event in our community, I just really appreciate it, and I know that our community does as well, so thank you.
Kevin? All right. We are actually not going to be able to close the meeting because we have to go back to closed session. But Kevin, would you like to, we were gonna close in honor of somebody, so if you just want to do a little discussion on that, please?
Yeah, yesterday, Sandy McGregor died. She was Dick McGregor's wife. Dick McGregor- Berwin, how long you been on council? How long you been on council? Yeah. So, he's the record holder, and then I think I'm two, Dick McGregor's three. But his wife Sandy was the first woman to be appointed to a planning commission. She passed away yesterday, and I'm pretty sure that's right. But there was a lot of conflict because they didn't think that a woman could do that job. And so, that was in the mid 80s, and she was a, she was a spitfire. She lived right down the street from me, and she was a spitfire. And she ended up doing, after that, doing a whole bunch of county planning things. She was an amazing person, super smart. Never argued with her because she always lost. So, I thought it might be nice to close the meeting in honor of Sandy McGregor.
So, we will be doing that when we come out of closed session. So, thank you for joining us this evening. We'll be going back to closed session. If you're not doing anything tomorrow, come to the barn for the farmer's market and all kinds of cool stuff. So, thank you all for being here this week.